Just like where it was there, what was talked about. There's kind of thing.
Yeah, okay.
Official for anything.
Your place in our place to speak on your behalf.
Well, I got risen.
The other thing, the other two. Yeah, that gives them a quorum. Yeah, it's not a great meeting. They keep telling us they.
Probably gonna like choose to.
What's open to this? Yeah, they're supposed to be there. Really?
My office should tell me she should under.
It's a fact. Didn't even enter my brain. Didn't even enter my brain, but then. You know, we're all sitting there. Twenty-five. Social after an hour and a half meeting just with these individuals to talk.
Hey, Joyce, how are you?
How are you?
I'm doing well, thanks.
And you, you left, how long did you stay?
Yes, well, my tulips, I know, that's right. That's okay.
So you've.
Yeah, my tulips are already.
They were just getting ready to draw.
Oh, okay.
I haven't had a chance to prune really well, and now I can't step in my bed. I don't want to pressure.
Raffle tickets. Is there a girl price? Thank you.
Well, I, I put in and wasn't.
Yeah, you, you got busy when there was some sunshine, didn't you?
Probably the best comment came from Kent Barnes.
Yeah.
Who said, you know, I was a transportation commissioner when we started this in nineteen ninety-five. It's sixteen years later, and it added one hundred and eleven million dollars. What you really need is time limits on this. This is absurd. Six months for this one on the process, six months for that. And you could see all of the congressional staff. And looking at each other, kind of. Duh.
Well, that's why. Well, your examples are well taken.
The, but the, the thing is, if, if you were sitting in the audience and you watched Micah, you could see the moment at which the door lost it.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Micah just, I don't know.
I appreciate that. That's why I look back and say, you took a lot, and I said, you gotta appreciate the way you're trying to explain.
Oh, yeah.
And he did the exact same thing. I didn't realize he apologized, and he had, or that Parkers and Schuster, when he said, I'll be offended, he offended everybody, you know, this one trip. Because I didn't feel offended at all.
No, not at all. This is, yeah, this is, this is a guy who knows how to conduct a meeting and get business done.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the February twenty-second Washougal City Council meeting. Ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Forsberg, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Costin?
Here.
Councilmember Russell?
Present.
Councilmember Morris? Councilmember Delivar?
Present.
Councilmember Greenley?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
And Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
We did receive a communication from Councilmember Russell that he is ill this evening and asks to be excused.
You mean, you mean, uh, Morris.
Morris, I'm sorry.
I'm feeling much better now.
It's amazing how instant that could be. They haven't had it written down.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we excuse Councilman Morris.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I'm gonna take it as a motion to excuse Councilman Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Michael?
I would like to pull items number one and seven from the consent agenda.
Okay. Any other items? Okay, hearing none, moving into.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you, could you pull, I'm sorry, yeah, never mind.
Moving into public comments, any individuals that would like to address the council this evening? Okay, seeing none, going to the consent agenda. This evening, the consent agenda will deal with first consisting of the special council meeting minutes of February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, council workshop minutes of February fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, the regular accounts payable claims in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents, Agenda Bill twenty dash eleven, an interlocal agreement with Clark County for regional recycling services, Agenda Bill twenty-one dash eleven, interlocal agreement with Clark County for decant services, and Agenda Bill twenty-three dash eleven, a supplemental professional services agreement number three with FCS for bond parity certificate.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. And going back to those items that were polled, item number one, council minutes for February seventh, two thousand and eleven. Michael?
And Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the council minutes of February seventh, two thousand and eleven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under roll call, it's noted that all council members are present, and then the first motion is to excuse three council members, so I think it might be prudent for us to amend that roll call, to delete, and I'm going, I move that we delete the names, Michael Delivar, Paul Greenley, and Rod Morris.
Second.
Okay, with those changes made, I've got a motion and a second. Are there any other changes to the minutes? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to amend and approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And item number seven, Agenda Bill two-two dash eleven, the Washington Department of Commerce Energy Efficiency Block Grant Contract Amendment. Mr. Delivar.
And Mr. Mayor, with regards to the, I, I think it's part of our new policy procedures, or maybe it's just remembered, or say newly enforced policy procedures of the council member who has pulled it from the consent agenda to begin the discussion, I, I don't want to speak at a turn, but I want to just discuss the amendment. I didn't want to propose it, or just say, I didn't want to move the, the bill itself. I just wanted to discuss it just briefly, once it's been moved. And so that brings up the interesting question of, should I just discuss the bill now and then it's moved, or should we just have it?
Let me, let me fix that for you. I move that we approve Agenda Bill twenty-two eleven.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I understand correctly, the, the main changes to this are to delete the specific engineering firm that is listed in our grant, as well as the specific solutions for the lighting. Is that the main changes?
That's part of it. Based on Department of Commerce's recommendation, the original application, which was under previous administration, alluded to specific companies, one being McKinstry Ascension, to assist us on that, as well as other companies that were referenced. Also, the in-kind match, there is originally forty-five thousand dollars identified in working with Commerce, State Department of Commerce. The in-kind match, since we have a project manager on this, the assistant director, Jim Dunn, finance director, anybody else's time, is a in-kind rather than out-of-pocket.
Excellent. And as far as the activity too that's being changed, it's being changed from install LED T-eight lighting in various agency buildings to simply just installing high-efficiency lighting in various agency buildings. Is that basically just to make it more generic, so that it is, that several different products could be used potentially, instead of just targeting one lighting?
Right. We anticipate with the partners, since Battleground and Camas are part of the grant, that when MKE did their baseline assessment, they found multiple fixtures, as far as when buildings were constructed, different type of ballast, so we want to be able to utilize high efficiency and not go specifically with LED, if we don't have a fixture that would be comparable.
Okay. Well, thank you. I, I appreciate you answering those questions, and, yeah, my, my main thing that came to mind on this, and I'm not sure exactly what to do with the thought, is that when, it's, it's interesting that we're going, I think this is going in the right direction with this grant of, rather than targeting specific engineering firms and specific installations, that we simply allow this grant money to be used for the best available solutions, and perhaps even the best available engineering, not saying that McKinstry is not. Anyway, that's, that's all my comments for that, and I yield the floor.
Other council comments? Steve?
I wanted to second Councilman Delivar's comments, but I also wanted to catch the staff before they got away, and tell you that I think that this is one heck of a good management job. You're saving us forty thousand dollars in cash here, which we can now use staff time for. And while I recognize that sometimes staff time is in short supply, so is money these days, so nice going. During the comment session, I'll have a couple ideas where we could use some of that money. Thanks very much.
Other comments?
I, I just wanted to add a little history here. At the time that, that this project was created, we were also working with McKinstry on what was called a value engineering survey. The basic idea was that they were gonna look at every, all of the energy use within the city, from lights in chambers to the big twenty-five horsepower electric motors that are used as, as lift pumps for both wastewater and potable water. Modern smart electric controllers can be very much more efficient. And what value engineering is, is it looks at each energy use and says, can you replace it with a more modern, more efficient tool, and have the savings pay for the cost of the replacement, and still provide savings to the city? McKinstry is an expert in that, and they were brought to the city by the State of Washington General Services Administration. Without going into a boring level of detail, there was all kinds of reasons to want to do it with McKinstry. Situation's changed since then, and, and so it, it certainly makes sense to, to modify the contract. Also, at the time that this was being done, at the initial time that this was being done, there was great hope that, that this contract could be leveraged into having a particularly, particular LED manufacturer move its manufacturing facilities from China to the port of Camas, Washugle. We even had a building picked out. That didn't happen, for a number of reasons, none of which having to do with the city. So it's entirely appropriate that, that all of these changes be made, but I, I just wanted to point out that, that there was some history here as to why all of this was done this way.
That's it. Thank you, Paul. Any other comments on the item? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the Washington State Department of Commerce Energy Office Aura Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant Contract Amendment. Wish we could be more efficient in the number of words in that one, but. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Into the mayor's report, the only item I have for you this evening, I'm sure many of you know, yesterday we had a congressional transportation hearing in Vancouver. One of the things that hasn't been reported so far, anyway, prior to that meeting, the mayors and county commissioners were invited to come in for an hour privately with the congressional delegation that was here, and speak bluntly about basically the same things that the hearing was put on to solicit from the public in the nine o'clock meeting. Chairman Micah was very insistent that the Congress this year will be tasked with rewriting transportation policy and legislation for the entire United States. And what he's looking for are instances and experiences and things that we have gone through as jurisdictions, that either put the government in our way, put onerous requirements on us, caused things to be delayed, to get more expensive, on and on and on. And one of his, basically, mostly his sole purpose for being here was to take testimony on what things those could be, some specific instances of those, and suggestions on how we can help to shape a better product coming out in the future for the diminished dollars that we're gonna have. We were able to provide some input back to the delegation in that meeting, and I've already directed the, our staff through our recent experiences in the last couple of years to follow through with the, the congressman's directive of trying to help them find some of those specific instances where things just didn't go the way they should, or things that just get caught up in the red tape, and, and things that we just don't need to have in our way. So we'll certainly be trying as a city to get that information back to the, the delegation themselves in that transportation committee. So it was interesting to be in a meeting that, one, was a little bit private, and two, was as blunt as it was. And for those of you that may have been at the, the public meeting later in the day, he was just as blunt to the rest of us, so we didn't, didn't manage to take any of that personally. Jennifer, do we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay. Council comments this evening? Paul?
I just wanted to, I, I was also at that hearing, and I just wanted to add to your description a little bit. I think, in fact, I'm sure, that most of the people, myself included, expected it to be a comment session on the Columbia River Crossing. It was not. Anytime that Congressman Micah made it very clear at the beginning that he was not there to entertain discussion of any particular project, or any particular funding mechanism, or anything like that. This is general policy legislation, and he, anytime anybody tried to talk about the crossing, or light rail, or tolls, or, he cut them off. And he was very blunt about it, and I'm sure there were some ruffled feathers, but I have to admit that I, I had to smile to watch a real pro run a public meeting. This guy's been at this for a while, and it, it was, it was interesting to hear. That's it.
Other items from council? Molly?
Yes, I would just like to speak about something completely different, and that is a little buzz that I heard today, that Friends in the Gorge and other communities in the gorge are having a centennial of the Columbia River Gorge, and they are looking for input from the city of Washugle and all the commu, the different facilities within Washugle, like the historical museum, and some of those as the gateway to the gorge, to kind of kick this off. So when it was brought to my attention today, it really intrigued me, so I'm gonna follow up on this, but I hope that everybody in the audience, and everybody on council, will consider this as a real opportunity for our little community to really shine. So that's it.
Excellent. So it's the centennial of the Columbia River Gorge?
It's some kind of a centennial of the Columbia River Gorge, and then apparently the call was made by someone from Friends of the Gorge. Now, I know that's a political organization, we don't have to agree with the politics of that, but they are kind of setting all of that aside, and they want to have a big festival for the whole Columbia River Gorge area. And I think this is a incredible opportunity for all of us.
Dave?
I wanted to applaud Congressman Micah's emphasis on local control. I hear a little echo there. And also his emphasis on local control versus federal mandates. It's a serious issue, and with the money declining, we ought to have more say in how it's spent. He appears to be headed in that direction, and I applaud him for that. One other thing, if I may, I mentioned that I might suggest a couple of things where we could use that forty K we just saved. And I, I recognize that people will be lining up to do that. The first one is, there are a couple of tennis courts out at Hathaway Park, Lower Hathaway, that are not in good repair, and they're not very well-used. And they might be converted with a little bit of effort and minor expenditure to a couple of pickleball, four pickleball courts. The, we have here in our area, the regional coordinator for pickleball for the state of Washington, and he's interested in getting a couple of courts so that he can have tournaments here. Tournaments here mean more business in your motels, your restaurants, and things like that, because people come and stay and, and use all the businesses in town, some of them. So at any rate, I look at this as an economic development project, and that's one way we could use the money. The other thing we could do is we could put that money aside. I had, I had asked that we do this every year for five years, set aside forty-five thousand dollars towards the restriping of E Street, so that when the mandate from the state expires, we could restripe it and put it back to four lanes. With the budget situation we faced this year, it was a little difficult to justify that, so I took a note from my father's notebook, if you want to be appreciated, shut up, and I did. But I think this, some of this money might at least be set aside towards that, because I think at the end of five years, enough people are gonna be sick of E Street as a two-lane road, that they might want to restripe it. And I don't want us to have to say to them at that time, gosh, you know, we'd like to, but we don't have the money. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dave, if you wouldn't mind, would you try and put together a meeting with the gentleman from the Pickleball Association?
You betcha.
I know we received a couple of emails from him, and I'm, I'm one of those that'll stand up and say I know very little about pickleball, although I did Google it a couple of times, and in fact, it comes up as one of the fastest-growing sports throughout the United States. I was in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, matter of fact, during that meeting, I got an email from somebody in regards to pickleball, and I piped up, and I said, has anybody around this table played pickleball? And the only one who had is an active-duty colonel, who had just come back from Afghanistan. He says, I played all the time when I'm in Afghanistan, that's, it's huge over there. So it, it probably wouldn't hurt us to find out a little bit more about it, so.
I will do that. I was in the same shape you were in. I, I had, I had no idea what this was.
Molly?
Actually, I'm very familiar with the gentleman that is proposing this, and as liaison to the Parks Board, he has come to the Parks Board a couple of times. He's been very cordial, and although the price tag to do the courts properly was quite a bit higher than we had a capacity, the Parks Board had a capacity to administer, we still were, I think there was quite a bit of support behind Mr. Wolf's proposal. And so I actually played pickleball when he invited us to go down. The nice thing about pickleball, it's kind of like a modified tennis, but it doesn't require that you screw your knees or ankles up, and it's actually a great game for anybody from very young age to a very old age. And the gentleman in question has also already contacted Community Education, so he's gonna be teaching that, regardless of the outcome. He really wants to get pickleball kind of instituted in Washugle, so he's gonna be teaching that in the spring, I believe.
So you don't necessarily have to keep the ball inside the fence line and not going over the top of the fence?
They actually take a traditional tennis court, and it's converted into, I believe, two pickleball courts. So it's half the size, yeah, but it's got a bigger, a bigger racket. But it's a whole lot of fun, and there's a lot of people that, you know, I mean, you can have a number of people that participate, so I think it's a great opportunity for us. I would agree with Councilman Shoemaker on this.
One other possibility here that, that actually could be done for significantly less money is, very briefly, we had a radio-controlled car track over here in the old pumpkin garden. They tell me that the only track in the region is in Oregon City, and it's closing. And the experience, I, I looked into it a little bit, and the, and the experience has been that, that these little tracks, which really don't take much, much room, as often as not, end up leading to a hobby store being placed in the community to support that crowd. Battleground, when they built their skate and BMX park, they now have a new bicycle shop, as well as a new skateboard shop, that have developed directly as a result of having that park. I looked into the possibilities of having them over where the radio-controlled airplanes are, over in the port, and neither the RC pilots nor the port seem particularly supportive of the idea. So, but very, very inexpensive and, and very, very small in its use of, of land area.
It does most definitely need, need space away from people, though.
It is, it is loud. It is loud.
From, from sitting in the offices here, it is very loud. Other items from council? Okay, moving on to public hearing. We have a public hearing this evening, Agenda Bill twenty-four eleven, in regard to the sign regulation amendments. Mitch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council? The, I'll see if I can do it the other way. The, the Agenda Bill this evening before you is to hold a public hearing related to amendments to the sign regulations, update to eighteen sixty. Okay. I have a full presentation. Little bit of background, we've had, the first PC work session was held on February ninth, two thousand and ten, so just over a year ago. We had, since then, we've had six planning commission work sessions, two public hearings in front of planning commission. Give him a member of sales.
It worked earlier, I promise.
And now we have, and we have four work sessions with city council, and we have one now hearing this evening. Public comments, initially comments were related to code enforcement actions. Council remembers, we, under previous administration, we were told staff was directed not to enforce our sign code, and so when we started enforcing the code, there were no changes at that time. However, it, it brought on the umbrella are those that were in violation of that, and we had a lot of issues related to that, who showed up at the initial public hearings, or public meeting work sessions. Since then, we've had, oh, we're there, thank you. We've had discussions relating to temporary signs, and we worked with planning commission and developed some criteria relating to temporary signs, and there was some mention with it in our existing code. However, no, no really timeframe related to that, and so we worked really hard on that. I do want to mention a couple of other items that came in, public comments that came in before we move on to the next item. I did receive an email from Steve Mattson, who's with the Clark County Board of Realtors, and he saw the proposed amendments. He noted that we didn't have provisions in there for off-site signs, which I'll get into a little bit later, but he just wanted to know what would hap, what happened this evening, and if you'd be involved as we move through the process. I also received a phone call from a business owner in downtown, who was concerned that there wouldn't be enough timeframe, given the notice, that there wouldn't be enough time for them to, and members of the public to show up at the meeting this evening, and asked that maybe that we hold the record open for that. I, in further talking to her, I discussed some of the issues that she was concerned with. I did tell her that the provisions that were talked. I did tell her that the provisions that we're talking about don't apply within the core where the business is located. However, she did have some questions related to temporary, or excuse me, off-site signs. And I said, "Well, that is one of those items that the Planning Commission is actually asking to come back to them, so we could be able to deal with that at a future date." I'm going to leave that to the discretion of council, however. There were two other public comments that were received after the public hearings with Planning Commission but before tonight's hearing, that were in your exhibit, I believe it was E, from Lance Killian. We had several questions related to temporary signs, banners, and combinations of signs. A lot of those things, we, I think, if we can come back to Planning Commission, we can address. He did, however, note that the provisions that we had in there for temporary signs and the award signs were excellent, so we really liked those. There was also a, from a sign company, commented that our standards for the limited-access highway sign, if we get a 50-foot tall sign, under current standards, we only allow monument signs. And so you'd have a 50-foot tall monument with, you know, a model with basically going up there. And so he suggested some ideas related to design for those, which we were agreeable to. And I think that's one of those things I think we came back to Planning Commission we can talk about. So moving on, 98% of the issues that we addressed or that came up as part of the amendments, we took care of. If I had to put a percentage on it, off-site sign is the one thing that we didn't get done. And it was, it's an issue and a concern to businesses. I think it's an issue and concern to staff as well. Planning Commission does want that to come back and so that is something that we will be discussing and putting forward to you. So real quickly, what's changed? Reorganization. We moved the purpose statement up to the front of the code to be consistent with the other sections within our code. We broke out the sign provisions that were all jumbled together in one section. We broke them out, so each sign type now has its own section within the code. We think it's easier to read and follow as you move through it. We did add, as I mentioned, a new section regarding temporary signs and we added a section regarding limited-access highway signs. I'd like to spend a little bit of time on that. Temporary signs, the criteria for this, they're allowed in addition to the sign, what you are allowed already onsite, so this is an additional sign that you can have. They are to be utilized on a limited basis to promote a grand opening, special sale event, or going-out business sale. They can be 32 square feet in area per face. They're allowed to be up for 30 days at a time, but no more than a total of 90 days per calendar year. And we initially had talked about 60. We had comments that that wasn't enough, so we bumped that up to 90. And you're allowed one per street frontage. So if you're on a corner lot, you would be able to have two of those. The limited-access highway signs, these are allowed adjacent to State Route 14 or within 300 feet of the edge of the right-of-way. You have to be in a commercial or an industrial district in order to utilize these. You're allowed, again, one sign in addition to the signs that you're already allowed onsite. And the area of the sign shall comply with the standards of the district in which it's located. This is one of those things that we may want to discuss a little bit more as it comes back to Planning Commission, given that they are a larger sign and we made one, look at having a, maybe a larger area. Maximum height, we spoke about this at work session and staff has some recommended language for you that's different than what we originally had in Exhibit A. Exhibit A states that no sign or sign structure or portion thereof shall exceed a height of 50 feet, so it's just a flat 50 feet, don't get any taller than that. What we are proposing, which is in your packet as Exhibit H, is maximum sign height shall be 20 feet plus one additional foot for each foot besides below the elevation of State Route 14. But in no case shall any portion of the sign or sign structure exceed 50 feet. So it's directly related to how tall does SR14 end up being next to you. So if it doesn't change in elevation, you still got a 20-foot sign. If it goes up to 30 feet up, you can go up to a 50-foot sign, so it's not just a flat 50-foot. And that's language as in Exhibit H in the record. Now Exhibit G relates to the off-site signs. As I mentioned, staff originally recommended, our recommendation was to remove all references to the off-site signs. We have a, one section in our code, existing code, that relates to off-site signs and that's for development. There's no number of signs or anything like that, but that's it. Our recommendation was to have that removed. Our current recommendation is to leave any language pertaining to off-site signs alone. And that is what is in Exhibit G in front of you. The changes that are in Exhibit G would modify Exhibit A, so the existing language there that's related to the development would stay and, but no new language regarding off-site signs would be added. Basically, just leave it alone for right now. And as I mentioned, the Planning Commission specifically made that in their motion, that they propose expanding the provisions for off-site signs for use by other businesses so that the city's code is content-neutral. And we propose that this one issue be added to the new docket for Planning Commission to consider next year. So they want that to come back to them, the provisions for off-site signs. And staff is in favor of that. I know we just don't want to make any changes to the code relating to off-site signs now, before we've had the time to go through that process with the Planning Commission and bring that back to City Council. And that could be as simple as council just giving staff direction to move forward with working with the Planning Commission on that. So I did this to help kind of understand the motion that's before you tonight. We had Exhibit A, because the motion is a little bit different than what's in your packet right now. We have Exhibit A, which was the Planning Commission recommendation, and all the changes underlying strike out. We have Exhibit G, which is relating to off-site signs, which basically makes no changes to off-site signs, so it would modify Exhibit A accordingly. And Exhibit H would add that language into Exhibit A related to the sign height. And that's all in front of you on the ordinance that Don provided, which is known as Exhibit I. So with all of that, the recommended action is to hold a public hearing and public testimony. If council desires, make the motion to read the ordinance by title and pass, close, and publish the ordinance as usual.
Okay. Thank you, Mitch. At this time, I will open the public hearing to those members of the public that wish to speak either for or against the proposed amendments to the sign regulations. Please come up to the microphone if we can get your name and address.
Sam Medford, 1767 North 12th Street, Waschuggal. And I'm with the managing broker for Harbor Bay Homes here in Waschuggal. And I've been real estate for about 20 years and the importance of the A-frame signs are so important, not only to us, but to owners of homes who are advertising that their home is an open house. It's one of the only ways we have to direct people to property. And I've been doing open houses over in Vancouver for a long time. And I always ask people where they found out about, how did they show up to the house? Read the paper? Did you get online? Most of the time, 90% of the time, is, "No, I saw your signs." And they came to the house. So I just wanted to say how important they are to take that into consideration about where we're allowed to put the signs and how long we can leave them there. I pick mine up every night. And I don't, you know, have them in the way of anybody, as long as they're not blocking public transportation or anything like that. Just want, I'll be at the hearings also for some testimony, but I appreciate the opportunity here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, third and final call.
Marcy Wilcox, 3386 G Street, Waschuggal. And I just wanted-
Could you speak into the mic? I can't quite hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Anyways, I, my partner and I have a small, really small business here. We do a seasonal consignment sale for children's clothes. It's called Trying Not Spending, you may have heard of it. But anyways, a couple of things for us, just because we don't have a storefront, putting our signs up to, just to let the community know when we're having our sale is very important. And then also, we do have our sale down in the Port Industrial Park, so, you know, way off the beaten path. So we need directional signs as well during the sale because obviously no one's just going to drive up to it. So anyways, just wanted to express the importance of signage for us. We're getting ready to do our sixth sale and it grows at each time, which is great and surprising, but it's very difficult to work around the sign issue in Waschuggal. We advertise in Camus and there's no problems with that. So that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Marcy. Any other members of the public wishing to speak this evening?
Dan Dilly, 1913 C Street, A-Your-Town chimney here in Waschuggal. I had a conversation with Paul earlier today about the monument signs. When we put ours in, got a permit, they said, "Yes, you had to have a monument sign," which dictated where I was going to locate it, at the front of my store, because it has a slight bend, it's not a real straight stretch. So I wanted to get it high enough to be above the roof gutter so people could see it from both directions. And once I had it put up, people came out to inspect it and pass it and they said, "Well, what'd you do that for?" Because you guys told me to. I had to have a monument sign instead of one post to get high enough and have a sign up there. It caused a problem getting in and out of the driveway for seeing, you know, on slight bend and stuff. So we didn't locate the sign where we preferred to have it because we couldn't have a single post and a sign on top. We're not, we're not a strip mall or something where we're listing several businesses, we just wanted to have our sign there. And so it was a problem for us and I think that the monument signs blocked too much of the traffic to see coming down. You know, if it's a small business, let's have a small sign on the post or something. I think Mitch might have addressed that a little bit, I'm not sure. You know, it's hearsay for me, it's done, we're there, but, you know, I just think that that should be addressed a little bit in the sign thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Any other individuals wishing to speak? Final call? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and turn the issue to council.
Mr. Mayor, this motion, let's see, this Agenda Bill 2411, correct?
Correct.
It is. I'd like to make a motion to table it if it'd be all right with council. Let me pick it up again and talk about some more in workshop.
I'll second that and, but I also want to kind of pass on some thoughts to staff as part of that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to table. Council discussion?
Basically, just some of the information I, we received tonight, I just need some time to take it in and discuss it and I think there's some just broader, bigger issues. I did have some questions if I could ask staff at your-
Absolutely.
The first one is, when we, when the former administration told you, told our people not to enforce the sign ordinance, do we have any records of any complaints from citizens about the signs during that time period?
During the time period that we weren't enforcing it? I don't know, I can't say definitively no, but I don't recall any.
Okay, that would be, that would be something of interest to me because if we did have a time period where we didn't, weren't enforcing anything and there were no citizen complaints, I don't, I'm kind of to the point of why we went back. So, I mean, other than making sure, you know, it's on the books and we're enforcing it, but, you know, if the citizens weren't complaining about it, I don't see where the issue was.
We can find that out.
The other one I wanted to ask is, these changes and this information, I know the proper protocol is to go through Planning Commission and then it comes to us. Was there at any time, and I'm just trying to jog my memory, did this ever come to us first for input before it went to the Planning Commission as a whole, as the entire document?
Before it came to Planning Commission? No, not that I'm aware of. I mean, it was discussed, I believe, at your work sessions and whatnot, but as far as, if you're asking me the question about direction or anything like that, no.
Right, right, there wasn't, okay. The other question I have is, and I like the changes, by the way, to the 50-foot sign with Highway 14. I think that's, I like that, but I want to know a little more about it. I think that's it. Thank you.
Paul?
I had a couple of things, just a thought that you might pass on to Planning Commission. The consignment sale, especially seasonal consignment sales, that might be treated as a garage sale or a yard sale, even though, I mean, you're going to have to change the language. Because right now, garage sale, yard sales can't be for that class of business, but it occurred to me listening that that might be a place to put it. I was stunned when I heard the monument sign story. Boy, I hope we fix that. The idea that you have to have a monument sign in order to get it up above your roof line, or to get it at an angle so that you can get it around the, you can see, be seen from both sides of the slight curve in E Street, seems less than efficient. And the other thing is, I recognize the, that Waschuggal Flowers is and properly should be grandfathered in with their electronic sign, but boy, I would hate to see a lot more of those. In fact, it's my fond desire that that would be the last one.
Other council comments? Dave?
A question, if I may, Mitch. By the way, you're very persuasive. You're moving me from the opposition column into the probable column to recognize this is a necessary evil. But the question I've got is, you mentioned referring several things back to Planning Commission. What's the vehicle for that?
That can be as simple as city council just directing staff that this is an item that you would like us to address with Planning Commission.
Can we take that up at the workshop?
Yeah. I may ask you to take it up tonight if you're so disposed to go ahead and send that one back that direction.
No, I think, I think this needs a better airing than we could do tonight. I think the workshop's an excellent, excellent place to do it. And I thank Councilman Russell for his suggestion. Thank you.
Paulie?
Yes, I would actually like to ask Mitch, if you have considered Mr. Medford's, Ms. Milcox's, and Mr. Dully's considerations, the issues that they brought up, have they been incorporated into some of the changes?
Mr. Dilly's specific issue, I think at the time, was related to the timeframe of the temporary sign permits. 60 days wasn't long enough, so we did put that other, but I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the other two issues.
Ms. Milcox's?
No.
Sorry. Wilcox. And then Mr. Medford's sign, the, I mean, the people that testified tonight, has there been any-
No. No, those are off-site signs and that, and those, that's an issue that we've, that Planning Commission asked for them, that to come back to them.
Okay.
We're agreeable for that to come back, but we asked council to make that direction.
So, I mean, I would just say, when I look at this Agenda Bill, it's been before Planning Commission, City Council, public hearings, 14, 15 times in the last year. I mean, who would have ever thought, I mean, I never would have thought that sign code would be such an issue. But I really don't think that we have a critical need to pass it tonight. And I think when we do pass it, it needs to be fair and it needs to be the right course. So I would absolutely agree with sending it back. Let's, let's get the input of a lot more people, a lot more businesses, and let's get it right. And the Planning Commission, I mean, we all need to be on the same page here.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that was a little confusing about tonight's Agenda Bill, if I may be so bold, is normally, when we have the Agenda packet, the Agenda Bill is fairly straightforward. If you have more than one option, this is Option A, Option B, Option C, or so on, so forth. Most of the time, though, we simply just have one motion. It's a pretty straightforward thing. What was confusing tonight about this is Exhibit I is the entire code from what I can- can see, with all of the strike-throughs, underlines, I mean, everything that is, it's amended. And then we have Exhibit G and Exhibit H. And what's, what's kind of frustrating about this, in trying to figure out what exactly we're supposed to be moving up here, is thinking, all right, so do we move to pass Exhibit G, Exhibit H? If this comes back for us again in the same form, one thing I would recommend is perhaps a little bit more guidance about what the motions, recommended motions are, so that we don't assume that we're passing a sweeping legislation if we just pass one exhibit versus the specific other ones. The other thought to consider there, and one that I would request, I'm not sure exactly what form of this is gonna take yet, but I would request that when the sign, when the Planning Commission takes us up again and submits changes to the council, it might be worthwhile for us to take the housekeeping items as one Agenda Bill to come before us, because I mean, there are several things which I, I am certain are not controversial at all with the council, or the Planning Commission, or the public, such as changing off premises to off-site. It's simply just cleaning up the code, and there are several different things like that, which I'm sure we could pass easily tonight, but the problem is we have substantive changes, which we don't want to tack into this. If it's possible to separate out the non-substantive changes, reordering, and like you mentioned, there's some good reordering of, of some of the sections, to break it into different sections, without changing anything substantive, if we could do that first, it might make it a little easier to discuss the substantive issues a little bit later on, so they're smaller bills. It's easier to digest for everybody involved.
Okay. Kate?
If I, if I can respond. I, I understand the, the confusion part about it. Exhibit A was the original recommendation from the Planning Commission to you, and so that is, had all the underlines strike out. That, normally, that's exactly what you see, and, but since that time period, but we, we talked about, we wanted to add some language relating to sign height, and so that was the Exhibit G, and then we had the, or Exhibit H, excuse me, and then we had the discussion around, what do we want to do with off-site signs? We just want, we don't want to touch that now. We, we just want to leave it, it's not, we don't want to make any changes related to that. And that was what Exhibit G was intended to do, was to modify that, so no changes are being made. Basically, it's an exhibit to change nothing. It's just to leave it exactly the same. And then, all that was just rolled into I, so you'd have that, like you had at the beginning, Exhibit A, with everything, the, you know, site, premise, that, those kind of changes, adding temporary sign provisions, adding the height along SR 14, and then leaving out the off-site signs. That's really what it boiled down to in Exhibit I. So I, I really don't believe that there's anything contentious within, that's ending up in Exhibit I. It's basically not touching the issue that, that you've heard about from the public, that they want to talk about off-site signs. That's what they want to get back to Planning Commission, and staff is favorable to do that.
Actually, we're trying to make a, my idea is try and make it more easy to digest by having it all in one exhibit, as opposed to have, referring to three different ones.
John?
And I think this is, kind of goes to a, a bigger problem in regards to the way that we do this, the procedural way that we do this. No offense to the work that the staff has done, or the Planning Commission, they have done and fulfilled their roles to the best of their ability. But really, we're asking them, in a lot of ways, just to walk blindly, because the council, as the representatives of the people, have not heard from the people in regards to these issues. And so, how can we help to give them direction, when they're already working on it, and they don't know what necessarily maybe the issues are? I mean, it, it seems to me that somehow there needs to be, when we have heady issues like this, somehow it possibly needs to come in some form to the council to get an idea of kind of where the council is on some of these issues. We don't have to dive into the really meat of it, but at least give some direction to the Planning Commission, so that they hear from the elected representatives in regards to kind of what's on their minds, and what the people are saying to them. It just gives some overall clarity. I know originally the Development Committee was going to work on a purpose statement for the Planning Commission in regards to this piece we're sending back to them. After kind of thinking about that a little more, I think that it's, it's gonna be better suited for us to have that discussion in a workshop, instead of in a committee, because it, it's something that I think the input on this is really going to need to be instructional, and, and it's going to take all of us and our diverse opinions and the different circles we run in, to bring that to the table. So, just some things to think about. I don't know what that looks like, or, or how exactly we proceed on those lines for future things that we deal with, but, you know, for, definitely for issues like this, I think it would be good for the Planning Commission and the staff to hear from us before they start working on things.
Dave, do you want to speak to that a little bit, in, in regards to process itself? Because I know, certainly, that's not a, a traditional way of sending that to the Planning Commission, because typically, they would start from the bottom up and, and boil and cook the product to come back to us.
I don't think that there's any specific statutory requirement around exactly how that works, other than you do have to have a formal recommendation of your Planning Commission prior to making changes to certain titles, particularly your, your development regulations, and your comprehensive plan, and, and any other things that they're statutorily required to do. There are multiple models that different communities use about how Planning Commission work plans are set, their agenda for the year, if you would. Some communities give Planning Commissions broad discretion to create their own work plans, and to, and to work issues from the ground up, and then they come before the council very formally after formal recommendation. Other communities have Planning Commission work plans for the year set by the legislative body, and they really only work on those things which are given to them by the legislative body. And then, I think most communities kind of work somewhere in between those two extremes, and we can look at something that would work there. And then I think it also is a function of what the topic is. I'm familiar with situations where the Planning Commission kind of generally knows that there's issues in the community, because they'll hear it, staff hears it from the council, and the Planning Commission works on it for a while, kicks the tires for a while, comes up with some basic parameters, and then staff goes and checks in with the, with the legislative body and work session to kind of ground-truth those ideas, and then you can chase them to more detail, and there may be two or three iterations of that, and then when it's baked, when it feels pretty baked through that process, then you have your Planning Commission hearings, and the idea is, hopefully, at that time, you're pretty close, and then what you can bring forward to the council in a formal recommendation from the Planning Commission, hopefully only has, either has none, or has just a very few items still of contention with different stakeholders or interest groups. As I look at the, at the history on this one, started back more than a year ago, it looks like that kind of happened. The Planning Commission took it all the way through a hearing in May, then checked in with the council, then staff checked in with you, with the council twice in June, and then it went back to the Planning Commission. They did some more work, and then it came back. So it kind of happened like that, but we can certainly, I think it's good to be flexible in how the, how that's approached. I think it's a topical, as you've, as you've mentioned. I know there's nothing that says you can't do it the way you suggested, or the way that this one happened. They're both okay.
Yeah, and I certainly don't disagree with John, especially on something that's, that's this large. We want to make sure that the process is, is correct, we get the input that we need, we get the oversight that we need on there. It's just foreign to me, from sitting on councils, if I heard you right, to, not to send something to Planning Commission, but to send something to Planning Commission with a, with desired outcomes of it, of, we'd like to see you come back with, you know, some things on off-site, we'd like to see you come back with a maximum 50 feet, and I've just not, I've not experienced sending something with directives of that, because...
And I guess I'm not looking at it as directives, but rather an outline, to say, you know, when you guys look at this, look at this from this angle, you know, is it benefiting our businesses?
Right.
Is it benefiting, you know, is it, is it flexible, or is it even, you know, consistent? I mean, is the downtown being treated like the rest of the city? Or is there, is there special exceptions?
Or is it not, and why?
Yeah, I mean, you know, so keep these things in mind as you guys work forward on this, at least just giving them some parameters, so they're just not out there kind of just, you know, grabbing things, so...
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much, when the issue first came up at a staff level, and the question came out, quite frankly, it was, it was as simply as, do you want us to go ahead and continue not enforcing the codes that we've got? And my answer was, no. Enforce them, if there are codes out there, enforce them. If we have problems with the codes, or if we think the codes are inadequate or need changing, then we need to address those, but while the codes are on the books, we enforce the codes. And that's where we got to the point of a deeper discussion of, well, how far do we go? Because we've got a lot of different things that we may want to look at. And I pretty much opened the floodgates myself, and said, look at the entire code. You know, let's, at least let's say at a date certain, that we have validated the code one side or the other. You know, I think one of the, one of the, I guess fulfilling things coming out of what we've done up to this point, is, other than one or two issues, we've pretty much validated that our code was pretty strong, and we've agreed on some language changes and some things here and there, but for the most part, it's pretty solid, even with all the input that we've had up to this point. So, that part of it's good, and we always knew that the, the off-site was, was gonna be the, I don't even want to say the contentious issue, it's just the issue that is yet to be resolved, of what we want to see community-wide, and, and balancing that, the, the commercial aspects of it versus, you know, the, the livability pieces, and, and what we see out there in our everyday walks and drives, and that type of stuff, so. And, and it's refreshing that they, to me, it's very refreshing, having sat on two Planning Commissions as well, that the Planning Commission is willing to take this back and say, we'll take that back and work on it some more, because I tell you what, this is not fun stuff. But...
Paul?
I was, I was just gonna say, I, I may be a little slow, but I have to admit, if you'd asked me at the end of January, and said, "Sign code, what do we want to do?", I would have said, "I can't even spell sign code, what are you talking about?" I think there needs to be a process in which you say, "Okay, we need to, we need to work on the, on the sign code." Planning Commission, what are the issues? And then have, maybe it makes sense at that point to have that come back to council? Because I, I, I wouldn't have had any idea even what, what the issues were.
Yeah, that's a good, good point.
And, and I know, from talking to individuals, that the, that the sign, that the Planning Commission feels a bit adrift, in the sense that, that they don't know what's on the council's mind, and they would like to. And, and, and sometimes, we don't know what's on their mind, and we would like to. So, somehow, rather, we need to do a little better job of, of communicating back and forth.
True.
Mr. Mayor, if I just, in terms of this Agenda Bill, and, and what's before you this evening, and, and we're gonna bring this back, I'm assuming that there'll be an affirmative vote on this motion to table. We'll bring this back to you on the 28th, and I think what we'll be suggesting to you at that time is that there are a number of changes, non-controversial, and actually greatly anticipated by your regulated community, that are, that exist in this Agenda Bill, and they're anxious for them to take effect. And I think it would be prudent to adopt those as soon as possible, so that they can take effect, and they, they can be leveraged in the community. And then, the other items, a couple of which kind of raised their head this evening, can go back to the Planning Commission, and as it goes back to the Planning Commission, it would be probably helpful for them then, to get some general parameters around your expectations around off-site signs, not, here's the code language we want you to write, but here are some general parameters and issues we'd like you to consider. And, so short of a comfort level with Exhibit I this evening, I, what we, we will do on the 28th is walk, walk through this package with you, to more informally explain what the Exhibit I is and the culmination of that, and describe a little bit those things that would be advantageous to pass as soon as possible, and then, if it's your pleasure, get directed to bring it back for action on the 7th. In the meantime, we, we'll be gearing up as staff to get back with the Planning Commission, because it's, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm seeing lots of nods that, yeah, the Planning Commission needs to kind of get ready for that, so we'll gear up for that, and, so that we can move forward. And we'll, we'll think about ways to enhance that communication between the two groups as well.
Good. Other comments by counsel?
Certainly, and just so the public knows, for those of you who weren't here for previous workshops on the item, the intended actions this evening, from a staff level, were certainly from Director Boyes, that we still hold the public hearing in order to engage the council, get this part of the process started, and get it on the records, but the council not take action this evening, or, or have any action items in regards to this one. So certainly, tabling it, taking it back in for further discussion gets us into there.
Have we closed the public hearing? I think you closed the hearing.
I did.
So we're done with that, unless we, so as long as what we bring back on the 7th is this, we don't need to have...
Well, let me ask, in, in having done that, Mitch, because I did formally close it, are there folks that still want to submit comment?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. John?
Is it possible, and I don't know the procedure on this, but is it possible to have another public hearing next meeting?
That's, that's the other side is...
Prior, prior to exactly what we're going to pass that evening?
Yep.
The off-site stuff, obviously, is not going to be in what we pass, correct?
That's what was proposed before you, this evening.
Yes. And so, so I think that that would be, I think that would be appropriate.
So then, we want a motion to continue the hearing? If you just continue it, then it stays open?
Then we don't have to re-advertise it?
Well, you'd have to re-advertise it for, if it's gonna be open, if we're gonna continue for the next meeting, then you'd want to, you'd want to hold it open to, it's time-specific.
Yeah, 7 o'clock on the 7th.
Do we, do we need a motion to hold a public hearing on, on the 7th?
Hold the record open to the next meeting, or a meeting specific?
Just continue.
Can you give me text, so that I can say?
Well...
We gotta close this tabling real quick.
Yeah, and in...
Two separate, two separate items. One is to continue this, or to table the ordinance, and then another one could be to hold the record open for, for the public hearing to the next council meeting.
Doesn't matter which order those come in, though?
I don't think so.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second on the table to table the sign code regulation amendments. Any further counsel discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In regard, in, before you start, Paul, in regard to continuing the public hearing, I would almost suggest, not any offense to the media present, I'd like to hear a discussion on if you think for the items that we believe are gonna come forward on the 7th, if we need to continue or hold a second public hearing on that. I'm only looking at the expense side, and the notification side, and all of that. Again, the, the only public testimony we had this evening were in regards to off-site signs, and it's not gonna be included in what comes back on the 7th anyway. So, my thought would be, if we're gonna do another public hearing, let's possibly hold off on it until we're ready to bring that larger, more contentious piece back.
We also heard on monument signs too, though, so...
And that, the monument signs aren't, aren't the subject of any suggested changes, and actually, that provision's not a new provision. So what we heard tonight was that, for the first time, that there's a concern about that provision, and so that hasn't been vetted through any process at all. It's nothing new. It's, it's existing language. So I, my suggestion would be, that gets tossed into the hopper with the other items going back to the Planning Commission.
But my suggestion would be, if the council is willing, that we end the discussion tonight, just with the tabling of it to next Monday's workshop, unless someone really wants to hold the, hold the hearing open and go through that again.
So, in a, in that sense, if there's no substantive change to what we will be voting on, then the public hearing has been held, and that's part's done.
Has been, no matter what.
All right.
We've fulfilled that part of it.
Yeah, seems reasonable.
Kate?
Hearing any other action? We're...
We're moving along. Thank you, Mitch. Okay, new business. Agenda Bill 2511, resolution on surplus vehicles. Ms. Forsberg.
Mr. Mayor and council, before you tonight, you have a surplus resolution for several vehicles and a street sweeper, all of which were paid for with general fund money, so we don't need to hold a public hearing. But they are vehicles that are no longer being used by the city, and it's in the best interest to surplus them. So the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only and pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Resolution declaring certain property a surplus and authorizing its sale.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Any council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Bill 2611, resolution to adopt utility financial policies. Mrs. Forsberg.
Mr. Mayor and council, the final report by the FCS group included financial policy recommendations, and the FCS group based its final recommendations on the assumption that the city would formally implement these financial policies. The bonding process that we're going through for capital project revenue bonds also includes a bond rating review, and having these formalized procedures in place will be of benefit to the city. So the recommended action is to read the resolution by title only and pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the, the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Resolution adopting utility financial policy.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion?
As I was going through this, this policy, I do appreciate the fact that it's very well-written. But there are a couple of sentences which I, I'm not sure if we need to retain. And specifically, there, it's the same type of sentence which refers to industry standards. And I wanted to bring this forward for council discussion because this may be appropriate to keep in there, and it might not. It all depends on whether or not we want more of a informal discussion. If you take, for instance, under Section 2, capital contingency reserves, the second paragraph in that, this is on page 2, begins with, industry standard is to maintain a minimum balance of capital, in the capital account equal to 1% to 2% of the utility fixed assets. The city will establish a target of 1% to 2% of utility fixed assets. The thing that comes to my mind is, if the industry standard shifts a little bit here or a little bit there, this could become an outdated document just by that fact alone, whereas maybe our target is well within what's accepted. And if we simply maintain, the city will establish a target of 1% to 2% of utility fixed assets, that simply just sets our policy, and the policy itself can weather the industry changing and flexing just a little bit here and there. And where this is most obvious, I see, is industry practice ranges from 30 days to 120 days of O and M. And then we have 60 to 90 days, 45 to 60 days, 30 to 45 days, depending on, on the utility. Anyway, I wanted to bring this to the attention of the council and see if my fellow council members thought that this was something that we should keep in there just as a reference point, or something we should just keep in the background documents but not as part of the official policy.
I don't want to cast aspersions, but bond underwriters are incredibly literal and narrow-minded people. They want to see what they want to see. And the bond ratings and, and interest rates depend preciously on that kind of closed-mindedness, if you will. So I would encourage us to give them exactly the language that they want.
My thought, and I hadn't really, all the times that we've, we've discussed the issue and seen the things coming through us, both through the, the rate study and the information that came out of that, I've never really put it to that, that type of thought. The only thought that I have, and it may not mean anything, is certainly, as we go through and do our due diligence to update and do future rate studies as needed and/or mandated as we go through, this is one of the items that they, they certainly refer back to and/or suggest changes in, in which case, if some of those should change, we should catch it within a four-year window, three-year window, four years, we go out on those. But I don't know if that answers the question, though, either.
It answers a little bit, I think.
I know it is, to me, it's beneficial to have something in there as a standard, regardless how it's worded, just as it is on our general reserves and that type of thing, even as, as we're asked from folks, do we actually even have that policy written down somewhere? And is it defined what that is? It certainly does that, but your point's well taken. If we never come back to it, is, does that just become an outdated standard at some point? Other comments by council? Molly?
I would just say that I think it's really important that we do pass a policy. And, you know, I mean, I think that there is a level of confidence, I guess I would say, by having a written policy. And one of the reasons that we pass policy by resolution is that should the terms, or should the conditions change, whatever they are, market conditions or whatever, I think policy is meant to be amended as conditions change. And I think this is totally appropriate to do this, although I totally understand what you're saying.
Yes, yes, me too.
But I really do think that it's appropriate to pass this resolution of policy with, with the intent that should conditions change, that we can amend it.
Other council comments?
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda Bill 2711, amending council rules of procedure. Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, before you have a resolution which makes amendments to your rules, we reviewed this at a couple work sessions, and what you have in front of you captures the changes that you've directed in your rules. And the recommended action tonight is to read the resolution by title only, and then to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we read the, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
Resolution amending the city council rules of procedure.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the, the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion? Dave?
On paragraph 5.3, on page 5, does this resolve the matter of abstentions? Can you abstain without having your vote counted as a yes vote?
We eliminated the section that dealt with that. So, you defer to Roberts' Rules of Order now?
And Roberts permits that?
Roberts permits abstentions, correct?
Second question, if I may, on paragraph 5.4. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly if I've got the right reading on this. Perhaps you could help me out here, Dave. When I first joined the council, I moved to limit the power of eminent domain on the East Street project. And I was told that not having been a member of, of the voting majority that established that authority, that I could not move to reconsider it. As a new council member, I found that very puzzling and troubling. And I, is that what we're really saying in 5.4 here?
Whether or not a newly-elected council member who would not have had the opportunity to be on either side of the question is foreclosed from moving reconsideration of any action that preceded their time on the council, I think is what Dave's asking. Is that true?
That's just an example of, of the concern I have about this thing, which says, if you don't get it in this section, session, or the next session, and you weren't a part of the voting majority, you can't bring it up. And I, I've got real concerns about that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
My understanding of motion to reconsider is basically to retake a vote. That's my understanding. And under, my reading of Roberts' Rules says that when a motion passes and you want to undo that one vote, not change the issue or, or limit it or amend it, but take over that one vote, that's where it has to be the majority that takes up the issue to reconsider it. That's my understanding. Does that sound about right?
I think, trying to remember, Dave, how that all came about. Probably the advice or the, whatever the ruling was, was maybe inappropriate in your particular case, where it probably wouldn't be a motion to reconsider, because it would have had to have been at the next meeting, or the meeting, at that same meeting or the next meeting. Basically, you were asking for an issue that was kind of tied into that same thing, but it was not really a motion to reconsider.
That's my impression. What I asked for was an amendment to the authority.
So it probably shouldn't have been considered on, as a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
Should have been dealt with separately.
Okay, so such, such questions as that can be dealt with, outside of the motion to reconsider?
I would think so, but that, again, we'd perhaps go to Roberts' Rules to take a look at that.
If he went off the literal one, though, there probably is a hole there. I mean, if it literally is a meeting one week before a council member is seated and serves at his first, first council meeting, and it's a succeeding meeting, but he didn't vote on the original one because it was prior to taking office, there probably is a hole there.
If, if, if I can, and maybe you'll backstop me on this, my memory is that a motion to reconsider is only a motion to reconsider if it occurs within the same, in the case of Congress, same session, which means the two-year period. So anytime you have a new council, it's a matter of state law, that no council can prohibit a future council from acting. And so I, I would think that, that you have a new council, and therefore it is not a motion to reconsider.
I don't think it's, I don't think the reconsideration is the proper reason to allow or disallow what you were, what you were requesting, Dave.
I agree. I think it was an amendment. Okay. And, and that's my concern. As this thing is written, is that going to play havoc with, or, or be a nuisance to amendments like that?
If it was...
Not to amendments?
No, I think an amendment would be, would be handled under, under some other section. If it's, if it's a motion to reconsider, this would still apply, and it would have to be done, that meeting or the next following meeting. And I think the idea is there is to prohibit serial reconsiderations or serial votes on the same issue that's already been, been addressed.
And I understand the concern there. It was a proposal for an amendment, which got classified as a...
It's probably, the way that was handled was probably not appropriate to handle it under motions for reconsideration.
Hey, you know, if that's the worst thing that happens to us this year, we're in good shape.
Probably also one of the reasons that we do very little work in December, so we never run into that.
Other items for council?
Mr. Mayor, in that same section, you'll notice that 5.4 is listed twice.
Yeah, we'll delete that first one.
Hopefully, yeah. Okay, very good. And there's another issue which I know is not part of the listed changes, but one that I wanted to bring to the council's attention, and to get a little bit of clarification to see if this is something we should bring back to a future session, since we're amending the entire policy. And that is on Section 4, on page 4, the end of paragraph 1.4, 4.1, it states, "The council member who requested the item to be removed will initiate the discussion." And the, the discussion that I wanted to talk about there is whether or not, I mean, I know that we've sort of changed to, started doing it this way recently. And rather than having the staff or whoever the representative of that legislation give the overview, we go straight to the council member initiating the discussion. Would, from how I read this, this is very sparse language as far as this one issue is concerned, but my question is, would it still be appropriate for the staff to give the usual overview and recommended action prior to the actual discussion? And then, once the discussion comes forward as a discussion, then the council member could initiate?
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay.
Treat it just like any other agenda bill?
I certainly see no prohibition there for, from the council member who's initiating the discussion from simply saying, staff, would you explain this to me? What's going on here?
Right. That, that was the intent of, of my language in that sentence, and using the term discussion may have put it into a context that was unintended. Simply what's intended by that sentence is that if you're the council member to pull the item, the mayor will then defer to you when that item comes up. And it could be as simple as, I have two questions, and you know the questions, and you would ask them. Or it could be, you would say, can we have a brief report from staff? Or it could be that you would express opposition, or it could be that you would propose a change. So it, it didn't mean discussion in the normal sense of, oh, we have a motion and a second, here's council discussion. It was meant to say, you'll take the initiative to move the thing into whatever it was that you wanted to move it into, questions or whatever. So we could use a different word if that makes it less formal.
Well, the reason I bring this forward is that, when you consider that if it's brought from the consent agenda to regular business or to a regular item that we're going to handle separately, the person who brings it forward is almost always in opposition to at least some part of it. And if it's complete opposition to the bill, I would never move to pass it. That's why it could have some sort of challenge, and then, you know, I don't want it to go forward, so...
Right. And that'd be fine. What would happen is, you could pull the item, and then the mayor would defer to you, and you'd say, Mayor, I have some concerns with this item, and it's going to be difficult for me to be supportive of it. And then, you'd hand it back to the mayor, and then the mayor would proceed, depending accordingly. Might ask for a brief staff report, might ask for what specific concerns you have, and, and then it would play out until somebody else then would make a motion.
So, the, the main question I have, though, because it seems like we're increasing the mental mind jogging that we have to go through here, is if, if an item is pulled from the consent agenda, it will be discussed. And so with that one sentence, I'm, what I'm curious about is whether it's necessary to retain in here. Because the person who pulls it presumably will bring forward their discussion item, their, their objections, if you will. But by putting it in there, it's, it doesn't seem, to me, it seems like it's sort of superfluous because, very strictly speaking, people who pull these consent items are, they already have agendas going forward, they will be discussing it. And I'm, I'm not sure that it's really necessary to keep in there, because if we treat it, like I say, if we treat it as any other agenda bill, it's very likely going to be sufficient as it is.
Wouldn't have any major headache if we pulled the sentence?
Yeah, I wouldn't either. I mean, really, my only point in bringing that forward is, in the event that the pulling was just to get a clarification on one item, we probably don't need to spend the time getting a full staff report and going through all those motions like we normally do for a full agenda bill. We could just very simply provide the clarification or ask the question, and then the pulling member would say, okay, that's awesome, thank you, I move to approve. And so it's just a hint that maybe that's, it could be quickly disposed of, and that we don't have to go through the full process like any other agenda bill unless we really have to. That's all that's for. So, stricken, I think the council could still proceed in that way if it's appropriate.
I agree with him, too.
It's interesting, because I marked the same passage, and my concern was a little bit different, and that is not to take away from the authority of the mayor as the chairman of the meeting. I objected, I asked, one of these things we pulled a couple of weeks ago. When the time came, you turned to me and said, what are your concerns? You raised them, what are they? And at the time, I was reading something, and I, I would have let it go right on by. have let it go right on by. I don't want to see that. You're running the meeting. I like the way you do it. I'd like to see you have the authority to say, "You raised this issue. What about it?" So I share Councilman Delvar's concerns, but from a different angle. And I think that striking that sentence is a solution to my concerns, too.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we amend the motion by striking the last sentence of paragraph 4.1.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to strike the last sentence of 4.1, reading, "The council member who requested the item to be removed will initiate the discussion." Any other council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Paul?
While we were talking, I just happened to notice 3.1, 3.2, "In the absence of the mayor and the mayor pro tem shall preside. In the absence of both the mayor and the mayor pro tem, the council shall elect a chair." I think we have ordinance that makes the, yeah, the chair of the Public Safety Committee next in line. And that's ordinance.
So that would govern. But if we...
In fact, it may actually designate the chair of public safety as the mayor pro tem.
Pro tem.
Pro tem. I just don't remember the code well enough.
I'd have to grab, I'd have to get the code and read the code in order to recommend a tweak to that sentence.
Yeah, since it's already governing, can we just come back to it? Since I mean, we're already under that.
I'm fine. If, I know that I can trust...
Or you can just put it in there. You can just slide it into 3.2. "In the absence of both the mayor and the mayor pro tem, the chair of the Public Safety Committee will call the meeting to order. In absence of all three, the city clerk or the clerk's designee calls the meeting to order and calls for the election." Be a simple sentence added in there.
That's fine, too.
I would move to amend such.
Second? We certainly have had a recent meeting when at least three members were gone. Had I been gone as well, you would have, somebody would have been looking somewhere when Jennifer was here, so.
Here's an iPad that has our code on it.
Pardon?
Here's an iPad with our code. It's just a plug for our iPad, our iPad pilot project.
Chairman of the Safety Committee will be the elected council person, shall be the next line of authority. So if we amend this to be consistent with that, or delete one of the two, then we're fine.
So are we, okay, I think I heard a motion and a second. Are we okay in general terms of allowing staff to insert that language in there to clear that one up?
I would object to that. I think it would be appropriate for us to nail down the language or else bring it back, rather than just sort of authorizing an open-ended action.
Well, how about we pass everything except sections 3.1 and 3.2, and bring those two sections back?
I just assume you deal with the whole thing and be done with it?
I wouldn't change anything.
I think it's pretty straightforward. In the, in both sections, we would say, "In the absence of both the mayor and mayor pro tem, the chair of the Public Safety Committee shall preside."
Some, as an amendment, so moved.
Second?
Except that in 3.2, it won't say preside. It will say, "The meeting shall be called to order by the chair of the Public Safety Committee." I think it needs to go further, though, to say, "In the absence of all three, the council shall elect a chair..."
Yes.
"...in 3.1. And in 3.2, it would go on to say, "In the absence of all three," then it would be the same language that's already there, about the clerk.
Right. And I'm sorry to be a stickler, but Molly had made a motion. I had seconded, and now Paul has made a motion. We need to, either you need to remove yours, or...
I was going to ask who made the original motions anyway, because...
But it wasn't repeated. Since it wasn't repeated, it's not a valid motion on the floor.
Okay, so Dave, one last time, do you want to take 3.1 and read into the microphone the changes that you are...
What it will say?
Yep.
So 3.1 would be amended. I'll read the whole section. "The mayor of present shall preside as chair at all meetings of the council. In the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem shall preside. In the absence of both the mayor and mayor pro tem, the chair of the Public Safety Committee shall preside. In the absence of all three, the council shall elect a chair."
Okay. And then your changes for 3.2 would be?
"The meetings of the council shall be called to order by the mayor or, in his absence, the mayor pro tem. In the absence of both the mayor and mayor pro tem, the meeting shall be called to order by the chair of the Public Safety Committee. In the absence of all three, the meeting shall be called to order by the city clerk or clerk's designee for the election of a temporary chair."
Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion and a second. I'll allow you to remake them. I've got two completely different names that we didn't have in the first three. Okay, so I've got a motion and a second for the amendments to sections 3.1 and 3.2 as read into the record. Further council discussion?
Yes.
Jennifer?
I am so sorry to bring this up after all of this, but I see a change in 2.4, changing the workshop start time to 6:00 p.m., but I do not believe we voted on that yet. That's coming at...
Okay, let's deal with...
Twenty-nine point eleven.
Yeah, let's deal with 3.1 and 3.2 right now on the amendments on those ones. So any other council discussion on those two, on that amendment?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I understand correctly from the objections raised by council member McDaniel, technically, I believe that she would be correct in the fact that it would be sort of out of order for us, I mean, for whatever bizarre reason, to pass this and not pass the ordinance that would authorize us to change the time. And I would ask unanimous consent to table the present motion as amended until after we pass or consider Agenda Bill 29-11.
Second?
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to table this one momentarily. Any discussion by council? Keep the paperwork close at hand. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So staff, stay with us for a few minutes.
You know what? The ordinance actually only, doesn't deal with workshops. The ordinance only deals with...
You're correct.
Only deals with regular meetings.
Because that's all that we have codified.
Right. So that section, that section would be okay, because it's only about workshops. However, however, in item 2.1, it's the very exact, that would be the section.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, so we're tabled for the moment on this one.
Okay, so the next item is an ordinance that changes your regular meeting time from seven until six. And the recommended action is to read the ordinance by title only and then to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Yeah, I've actually, Dave, we've got another one in the middle of there.
Oh, did I have it?
Agenda Bill 20, but you get all of them, so don't go anywhere.
Okay.
Twenty-eight dash eleven, Amendments to the Washington Municipal Code 2.04.050.
Appointment Committee?
Appointments Committee.
Would it be, would it be out of order for the council to consider Agenda Bill 29-11 before that, just to keep the flow of...
That was my understanding of the import of the motion we just passed.
Then go back to the rules and then finish up with the committee?
Okay, so let's go to 29-11. Amendments to the Washington Municipal Code 2.04.010, changing the time of city council meetings. Mr. Scott?
So the ordinance before you changes your regular meeting time as you directed from seven until 6:00 p.m. And the recommended action is to read the ordinance by title only and then to pass, post, and publish in the usual manner?
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance amending the Washington Municipal Code 2.04.010 to change the council meeting time, start time to 6:00 p.m.
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second?
I've got a motion to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Any council discussion? Dave?
I understand the desire to get this done early and get home earlier. I'm concerned about two things. One is interfering with the family dinner hour. And six o'clock is generally the family dinner hour. It centers around that time for most families. And the second one is that I'm concerned that people who commute get off work at 5:00, either have to skip dinner, or they're not going to be here because they commute more than an hour to and from work. So it seems to me that a six o'clock meeting limits access and works a hardship on people. So I have a problem with a six o'clock hour.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, John?
Congressman Schumaker, if I can persuade you that this, this would basically make both meetings, the council meeting and the workshop, after we get to that, both starting at 6:00. And it will give consistency. I can't tell you how many times I've had constituents come to me and say, "I showed up at the meeting, but your guys' meeting was at, you know, 5:30, and, you know, I got there at 7:30, and it gets rid and gone." I don't know when the last thing that happened, but it's, but nonetheless, it's a matter of consistency. I think people will be able to say, "Ah, 6:00." It's twice a month. So, you know, if someone's going to get down here, I think that they can make the decision to eat dinner before afterwards. It's healthier to eat before 6:00. So anyway, I would, you know, I would just ask that if we find that this doesn't work, we can always come back and change it again later. But I think it's at least give it a chance, give it a shot, that we move it forward to have some consistency, so people know six o'clock Mondays, there's always something going on, council. So, thank you.
I just wanted to second what John said. That was, that was my memory of why we were doing it, and that it makes a lot of sense to me that the consistency of one time makes sense. And on the other hand, if we started our workshops at 7:00, there's way too many times we wouldn't be home until 11:00.
Molly?
Yes, and I would agree with what both of you have said. In addition, as the person that both plans and cooks meals before we come here, I would have to say that frankly, it depends on the season, you know? In the middle of the summer, we eat very late, and in the middle of the winter, we tend to eat very early. And of course, it's always dependent. Having a teenager at home, it's dependent on the school activity, the, you know, the scholastic activity, the athletic sport. And I do really like having the consistency, because I also have a lot of people that say, "I'm not sure. Is it 6:00? Is it 5:30? Is it 7:00?" And I do like the ability to have a meeting that's a consistent time, all of our meetings a consistent time. And so that may force us to move our dinner schedule, because I do agree that it's important to have a meal together. Dinner schedule up a little earlier or move it back a little later, but I do think it's important to have consistency of meeting times.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a follow-up. As important as many of us believe we are up here on this council, it is not, we're not that important.
Right.
And so if someone's going to make the effort to come here at 6:00, they can do it, you know, versus at 6:00 or 7:00. So, yeah, I think that, I think it's worth it. You know, it's not like we're having, you know, meetings like some other jurisdictions where they have it at 9:00 in the morning, you know, where no one can make it, so.
Dave?
I will defer to my colleagues on a trial basis. My only concern at this point on that, on the trial, is that are you sure people can take this on an empty stomach?
I'm going to start a rotating Monday. We can hit the Chinese restaurant, Harth, Bigfoot. We can hit all the downtown restaurants and just make sure we're all eating just prior to whatever time it is. To me, it doesn't matter what time you pick. As Mickey Mantle said, I'm just happy to be here. So any other discussion from council? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's now go back to the tabled item of 26-11. Are there any other discussions in regards to council rules of procedure other than those that have been amended so far?
Twenty-seven eleven.
I'm sorry?
It's twenty-seven eleven.
Oops. I think I got my own out of the way. There it is. Okay, 27-11. Any other items that council would like to consider for amendment?
I'd make a motion to pass.
I've already got a motion and a second for passing, posting in the usual manner? No other council discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Final item on the agenda for new business this evening, Agenda Bill 28-11, Amendments to the Washington Municipal Code 2.04.050, Appointments Committee. Mr. Scott?
Thank you. Mayor, council, before you is an ordinance that amends the municipal code section regarding your Appointments Committee. We reviewed this in detail at your last work session, and the recommended action is to read this ordinance by title only and then to pass, post, and publish it in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance amending the Washington Municipal Code 2.04.050 to provide clarification regarding council committee appointments.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner.
Second?
I've got a motion to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. Council discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just would like to encourage my colleagues to support this legislation. It is part of streamlining our code and making things more understandable, so there's not a lot of mystery around how the committees are appointed and who appoints them and how they're done. I also would like to thank our city administrator for putting the time and effort into making this code easier to read. And so anyway, I just want to encourage your support on this.
Other council comments? Okay, I've got a motion to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We had a lot of cleanup this evening. Final item that we have on the agenda for this evening are our second opportunity for public comments. Any members of the public that would wish to address the council? Yes, Barbara?
I'll be the bad guy.
You can't be the bad guy.
Sure I can. I'll be the bad girl.
There you go.
There we go.
I just want to thank, I guess, the mayor's office again. I had a, I had a computer problem, and I found out it wasn't my computer. And this morning, we had a difficult time getting to find out where the agenda went. And once again, I called the office, and I was trying to download what was supposed to be the agenda, and it kept telling me it was the packet. And it wasn't the packet because I got the empty document again. But we're working on it, and I just want people to know that when these things come up, resolutions are at hand. And I want to thank the staff for being there to help out.
You are more than welcome. I understand we had a couple of glitches with our, something in that thing that frustrates us when it doesn't work. It wasn't just yourself, so. Any other members of the public? Mitch?
Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, Mitch Hamontry, 291 C Street. Can you stretch any?
No, but you can take it right out of there. It'll come out.
First of all, John, I want to disagree with you on something... First of all, John, I want to disagree with you on something that you are important, for example, all of you are important to us, but about a month and a half ago, when the sand bunker that was built on 14, blocking everybody's view of our area, our store, Starbucks, they also took down the sign that had ourselves and Puffin Cafe, and it was down for about two weeks, but in the meantime, I called and emailed DOT with no results. Nobody seemed to know anything. And it's really frustrating. It's $325 a year to renew that, every year. And it's one of those things that we, it's almost a lifeblood, especially on the weekends when people are coming from the gorge or into the gorge when they see those signs. A lot of it's impulse. Starbucks especially, they were down 30% in those two weeks. So I talked to a city council person, Dr. Shoemaker, and he emailed somebody, I don't remember the person's name. The next day, the sign went back up, okay? So that, to me, is, and it concerns me, so when this big project, this big overwhelming project happens, is that little things like that, which really are important, not just to us, but to the community, this happens. So it's something, I don't know, policy procedure, how we can prevent little things like that from happening, but when it does happen, and the state, you know, feds, whatever, it doesn't matter, the bottom line when it does happen affects us. And lastly, I'd like to invite all of you for those 6:00 meetings to quiz us. Anytime you're hungry.
There, too. There, too. How did I step into that one? Sorry about that, Mitch. Other items from the public for this evening?
Right.
Mike?
Hi, Mike Riggs, 2868 West Main from Washington. So the council, if I understand this, the rules of procedures adopted, Robert's rules in abstention of votes, correct? So abstention of vote has no, it's just like it didn't take place, correct?
It's a vote, the individual vote did not happen.
So then, as a council, you now have, you now have the way to vote on any issue of yea, nay, I recuse myself for a conflicted interest, or I still want to vote. Is that it? Thank you.
Other, any other items from the public? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
I've got a motion in a second for adjournment. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
So just before everybody leaves, even though we've adjourned the meeting, just to confirm, the next meeting will be a 5:30 meeting workshop here next Monday. The 6:00s don't take part until March, so...